We pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see, visitors' comments. Affordable cars is on the agenda a little bit later. Any other visitors' comments? Okay, new business. We can have a discussion about the interim fire chief's salary. He's here.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, this isn't about a contract yet, but we need to pay ya.
Yeah, I spoke with Jess the other day and I actually kind of deferred the payroll payment for myself and whoever gets appointed to the deputy position just until we talked with the select board.
Have any, you have any suggestions?
I mean, my suggestion would be is seventeen thousand, seventeen dollars left in the fire chief's salary account. I would like to keep along with that, of course.
That would be the last half of the year.
That's correct.
At his, at his original salary.
That's correct.
What's highlighted was what was already paid for this year.
I thought we had kind of discussed bringing him in a little bit lower.
Well, you know, if Ray went out after decades of service.
Right.
Josh is just coming in as the interim chief, that makes sense. You want to throw a figure out there?
But you were gonna put something together, but send it to me.
I wasn't aware of that.
Before the last, we had talked about.
We had discussed that before, but that was more involving, like with the contract and then we have to talk about whether or not, you know, where the funds are gonna be allocated, if this goes down and whatnot, so it was a little bit more complicated than just.
And I, I didn't think we'd be writing a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna put a letter together for the board, for the last board, select meeting, since I wasn't able to attend, but I've done that since we deferred it today. And I did reach out to the town of New Grantry, chief lieutenant over there is around twenty-two thousand dollars a year. He hasn't renegotiated a contract in about six or seven years at this point.
He's been there a while, too.
Yeah, and then Chief Howe, who also has a similar call volume, the hard looking, Ocam, he's at thirty-three thousand dollars a year, and he gets paid for calls as well on top of the salary.
He's also been there a while.
Uh, he's only been there for, I don't know, maybe four or five years now. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but.
I mean, I just, I have a hard time with bringing you right in what Chief Walker was making after, you know, a lot of years.
Okay.
Just my, just kind of my accounting background and my professional background. I mean, I, to be honest, I was thinking more like between twenty and twenty-two for an annual. So then, you know, prorate based on what was left.
So what would they be?
Well, it would depend on how many weeks are left in the payroll cycles.
You're saying seventeen thousand dollars a year?
Oh, I said between like twenty and twenty-two.
Twenty-one, then?
I mean, that was my thought when the software started going down.
Uh, that would be for, well, I mean, so.
I don't know how many more payroll cycles there are.
I don't either.
Probably missed a couple.
And it's, it's a leap year, so there's a few extra days, so to be able to figure out exactly.
Jess could probably figure that out.
Jess would have to do that, he's not here yet.
I mean, that's just, that's my two cents, and unfortunately, Rob isn't here to chime in too, so.
Well, I'd rather figure it out tonight. And how much have you been making?
What's that?
As a deputy.
Uh, the deputy's salary was increased last year to fourteen hundred dollars a year.
Plus your calls, correct, yeah.
So about a hundred calls at twenty-three dollars an hour.
And Ray was still getting calls?
He was not.
No, so he wasn't called. So what if we went down, but, you know, he could get paid for his calls?
That be agreeable?
Yeah.
And see, and then, you know, we can revisit it with the new fiscal year.
Yeah, come, come July, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
And at that point, you're to that, did we do, we did six months, correct?
Right.
So at that point, you're close to that interim period anyway.
Okay.
To see how it's going.
Yep.
And if it's going, we'll get together ahead of time and write a contract and bring it up in real time.
Okay.
Where's your name? Is that okay then?
Yep.
All right.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to base the interim fire chief's salary at a prorated rate of twenty-one thousand for the fiscal year for twenty-four.
And that he can.
And get paid for your, for your calls, yeah.
Okay, and I'll second it. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you pose a question just in regards to that? So there will be possibly extra, I don't say extra, but money that's not allocated anywhere in the salary. Where would that be going?
It'd probably just come out of regular labor.
Would it just go like back into labor?
I don't know what your question was.
Yeah, yeah.
So for the, for the additional monies for the chief for calls, just take that out of the fire labor account?
Fire labor or general fund?
Or the, or the chief's salary, because there'll be leftover money in the budget.
Okay.
Because you're not gonna use all that seventy-eight thousand.
So it'll just allocate it at the end?
So that, yeah, yeah, when you're putting in, giving your time and there's a call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would use that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, sewer abatements.
They're in your packet, this is the backup here, we have four.
Four of them?
Yep.
Do you want Rob's packet?
Can you hand me Rob's packet? These, a couple of pages aren't pulling up on, on those links. One of their first two, but I don't see what's after that. Okay, yep.
They're different amounts because they are different, whether, um, somebody owned. Yeah, okay, so if somebody was just getting an abatement on one of their EDUs or on all.
And you have all the.
I have everything here, all this stuff, yep, yep. This one, I've got them all.
Okay. Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would make a motion to grant abatements for fifty-four, fifty-eight Mechanic Street, for two fourteen thirty-eight, for ninety-two High Street, three twenty-one fifty-seven, for four forty-one Main Street, two fourteen thirty-eight, and for forty-one Church Street, two fourteen thirty-eight.
I'll second it. Do we need to talk about it anymore? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you mind just signing each one?
I suppose I'll sign first.
Each one?
Yeah, unfortunately.
New pump station color scheme. Now, I did have a career as a painter.
I did hear from Cynthia.
Yeah, she responded to all.
And what'd she say?
She wanted a darker. Just don't disagree, I said that last week.
She said, "We'd prefer it to blend into the woods as much as possible instead of being more visible. A darker paint color, autumn brown, would do that. Alternatively, if you wanted it to look like a barn, and the tile red color with white trim seems to be the most often used colors, color scheme for barns around here. It's not L-E-Q-L-T's first choice, but is an alternative to make the building fit into community aesthetic."
Yeah, the, I was gonna say Royal Brown here off the color guide.
Sure, well, this is for, this is for the building, I think the other one was for trim, is that right?
A little over, I think.
Right, yeah.
What do you think?
I thought of a tile red with either a white or black trim to look like a barn, maybe with a small cupola on top to complete the sugar house look that we were originally going for.
I do like the cupola, I think.
What does the cupola cost?
I don't know. Probably too much looking at the price of everything else.
Maybe if the town bought it later and sold it themselves, it would be a different story. For sure.
You can have a contest. If you make a cupola. So autumn brown and, and white for a trim or black? Said prefer black.
I think that would blend in more.
Yeah, white would kind of show it up.
Right, that's gonna make it stand out again. And then, and then you get the.
Louvers and doors, that's it.
Right.
Yeah.
Do that black, too?
Yeah.
If you're gonna do the autumn brown.
Autumn brown and black or gloss black?
Or flat black.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Won't last as long, but.
I think those are good choices. We can always talk about a cupola after.
I do like that. I have one in my house, I like them.
Yeah.
They just, yeah, they kind of gussy the place up.
There's one on the side of the road in Belcher Town.
You should have grabbed it.
We should have grabbed it, it's gone now. Well, would you like to make a motion?
All right, so I would make a motion for the colors of the pump station on thirty-two A to be autumn brown and the louvers and doors and trim to be black.
Flat black.
Black black, LF nineteen, all right.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's good that we got the input from East Quavon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep, you want us there, Lee. All right, SGIS services agreement?
This is a typical agreement annually that you guys sign for the assessors.
So I would make a motion to accept the proposal put forth by CAI Technologies for, just sorry, for MAP GAS Maintenance Service, twenty-one hundred dollars, and if necessary, building footprints, twenty dollars per building added.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mayflower valuation limited. This is another normal.
Yeah, this is for cyclical inspections.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, was it, it was part of the budget line, right? Yeah, I did see that. So seventeen eight, the five-year.
Yes.
Right, okay, so I would make a motion to accept the Mayflower valuation cyclical inspection services for twenty-twenty-five in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to sign them?
Sure. Signing the statements.
You only, only, Eric, is it? Did you get them? Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Other new business. Meeting minutes approval. That's January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
And, and good to make a motion if you feel that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Old business. I was gonna talk about the interim fire chief.
How did we end ourselves, that's all right.
Reconsideration, list of stop to all alcohol licenses, why are we reconsidering?
So when the application was sent to the ABC after the applicant filled it all out, there were a couple of mistakes on the application that honestly, ABC said I should have seen. So clearly, they're putting a lot more ownness on us now than they ever have in the past. So there was a couple of instances where the name was abbreviated because she has a nickname instead of the full name, and a couple of questions that seemed irrelevant weren't answered that needed to be answered. So the ABC sends it back taking no action, meaning the board needs to fix these issues on the application and reconsider. You do have the reconsideration in your packet, however, the applicant was not able to come in today to go over it with me, and it's really her responsibility, their responsibility to make sure that everything is complete. So I said, "When you can come in," she was, I had an appointment at two that they didn't make. So, you know, I, I just said, "When you come in and we can go through it."
You shouldn't want to table it till our next meeting.
Yeah, and hopefully she'll come in by then.
All right, baby.
I'm good.
All right, matrix.
I don't have any of their information on them right now.
Nothing, never.
Affordable cars, class two reconsideration. All right, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
You're having a renewal hearing first.
Right.
Because under your statute of renewal hearing, nobody in the audience out here in public can participate with your findings, so I'm trying to figure out what's going on today.
Well, I would want to hear your position, and then normally I would ask.
On a renew, on a revocation hearing, if I had something against us, I would answer.
It's not a damn, yeah, it's.
This is a renewal hearing.
No, it's just reconsideration. As a courtesy, the board issued the one-month license because the applicant was not present to be able to defend his position when they were all being renewed. So this was another courtesy to the applicant for them to come in and give their explanation on why they should have the annual license after the, the last meeting when they weren't able to be here to explain themselves to you. So this is, a revocation hearing would have been a different story, right? We would have advertised it, et cetera, so.
Well, you want to lead on or ask questions?
Yeah, I guess, just.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't like it, they just asked them to come up, so we, it's better heard with the, uh, uh, microphones and stuff if they come up here.
Sit in the front seat.
Yeah.
Could you come up here and, so that we can record you?
I guess my concern is just all, everything we're hearing, you know, as far as being good neighbors and the amount of cars that are there. I, I do have concerns about renewing it, not, you know, I will be very honest with you, I do have concerns just from, just all the, all the complaints that we, we keep receiving.
But I'm sure you're aware under the statute, I passed all their revocations, I've done everything, all my inspections, everything has passed. There's been a renewal revocation hearings, under law, has to be granted, unless it's a revocation, you have to revoke it. And the law is right here.
Okay.
It's actually illegal to do the thirty-day license, it's January, January, the board doesn't have the power to rewrite the law, the law is law.
We just, we just renew just to renew?
No, you have, give the authority to renew or not to renew, or to limit cars or to do anything you want.
You have to do a re, but you have to do a revocation of that first.
I guess that's not our understanding from our legal counsel.
There has to be a revocation to revoke the license, otherwise it's gonna be granted, granted, it was January. The second thing is, people from the public is violating open public meeting laws according to your own handbook because you do not advertise this is a revocation hearing, you said it's a renewal hearing. And you're having people from the public talk about our business, and it wasn't put in public legal notice or anything else. You have to do a public legal.
Was it a hearing?
It's not a hearing, you can ask, you don't have to have a hearing.
You turned a renewal hearing into a revocation hearing. A renewal hearing is where people renew the license, you're having people ask questions and other stuff, that's not a renewal hearing, it's a revocation hearing.
It was never the intent to have a revocation hearing.
I understand that, but that's what they're turning this into, because people from the public are coming here, people from the public are talking, and it says in your own statutes, they can't.
We're, we're getting emails often also.
I understand this.
It's not just that, so my concern is about being a good neighbor and maybe just, you know, trying to rectify some of the concerns.
Correct.
As a business owner.
We were working on that as well, and, um, everything was kind of shut down when notice, uh, was taken, so.
Well, we didn't shut anything down.
I understand, there's, there's people in this room, other defendants, we have a court date on February ninth, they shouldn't even be here today. We have a court date in front of a real judge.
They can go anywhere, that's the flip of the game.
I understand that, but I'm saying, to speak on half of my business, that's why I'm presenting it to you. This is a renewal hearing, this is not a revocation hearing, they're not part of my hearing, they can sit here, they can listen to us, but that's as far as they can go. And as far as, you said, yes, I agree with you, if there's a complaint that needs to be rectified, I would rectify it immediately. But I had three inspections, all three inspections passed with no issues, and like I told her, if you.
What do these inspections pay?
I believe, as I told you, to bring all of your, everything that you have from the state police and.
Right, I have, you guys have a copy in your file.
It's, um, it's, I haven't seen it, I definitely haven't seen this, sure.
Well, we had officers go there and, and look around.
Correct, and whenever.
Count cars, I think the number of cars that you have on the property is a big part of the trouble.
It's also significantly less than the last inspection from the police as well.
Yeah, how many cars have you gotten rid of?
I'm gonna say around ten.
So how many are still there?
This was, uh.
Do you know how many are still?
From the police?
No.
And it was a violation, they'd have the violation down here, and I have ten days to correct the violation. They didn't find any violations on the property, so it was not a violation of anything.
Now, how about, I've heard that there are two businesses being run.
Is there?
Well, if there's any kind of special permit on this, it's only for one business, correct?
The special permit covers both businesses.
This is kind of out of my.
See this?
Covering multiple.
When you did your legal license right here, it says auto repair and used car business, and in the special license, it also says the same thing.
You say you're working toward good neighbor stuff and.
Yes.
Packing this out.
Yes.
Between yourselves.
And all the stuff that stores could find.
There's also a significant amount of trash that was bagged up and left.
Where affordable auto.
Right.
Everything was not legally.
Yeah, for Ed Banus.
Correct, and we had the permits transferred to us, and I filed them.
Right, because he never filed a review.
Correct, I filed them.
Right.
Correct.
You found them and went in and registered them.
Right. And I was back when the assessor's office helped me file a big work. And all the vehicles on the other side, which the police saw, are in this book. Every book is marked where they came from, which customer they come from, or a service provider, or AAA, guy killer, everybody else.
Do you run a towing company?
Yes, we do.
What's that, what's the name of that?
Gillespie Carker.
That you're here for affordable cars.
Correct, he was asking about both businesses on the same property, they're side by side.
And you're going to court?
February ninth.
And what will that, can I ask what that's gonna be about?
The landlord changed the locks on the building after he took, thought, and he took my license from me, but he didn't, for landlord tenant stuff, so we're going to court for that. He's, he's supposed to be my landlord, he's not supposed to be my guy that comes to town hall for me bothering my business. I'm supposed to have quiet enjoyment tendency, he's never bought a car for me, he has no incorporation of my business, he has no business bringing both his customers here, he's never bought a car for me, all of those little things. So I filed a court paper for it.
That's, that's, we have no jurisdiction over that.
I understand, but you guys are asking a question, so I'm trying to give you the answer to your question.
Yeah, 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 that, that really, you know.
But I'm just not trying to turn my renewal hearing into a circus. And I wasn't here at the last hearing, but I watched it, and I was really upset what I saw, because that should never have happened at a renewal hearing. That was more like a revocation hearing, we're free for all, everybody just have to talk and.
Well, he keeps saying hearing, but it's just a public meeting.
It's not a hearing, right, it's just an open meeting.
Public meeting, no, there was no, there was no hearing.
But it says in the town bylaws that you can't have anybody from the public talking on a license unless it's a revocation hearing, and asking you public notice. But to answer your original question, we haven't been found in any violation of anything, we're more than happy to clean up or do whatever you like us to do, but we haven't been told what to do, and we took it upon ourselves just to start getting the other cars that weren't there, and the insurance companies out of there.
And what's the plan now?
Finish cleaning up, break the rest of the place.
Meaning?
There's only one, two, three, seven cars on Gillespie Carkers, I, I don't know.
Seven?
Seven.
And what's the other side?
Affordable.
And how many are there?
I'd take a guess, what, fifteen?
Because my understanding that the special permit has a limit for ten.
That's incorrect, the special permit has no limit, it was not included in the special permit. Somebody drew a map and put a number on it, which the court said doesn't matter because it's not in the special permit. The numbers would have to be written in the special permit to be.
But we could put that on.
Correct.
Right. Not right now.
But it would also grandfather me in, to fix.
That might be helpful.
Right, but it would also grandfather me in, to fix the problem, you can't just grandfather it now and say, "This is what it is, and I'm a violation of it." That would be unfair to.
I know, I know, I wouldn't, I wasn't proposing to do that. Wasn't proposing to say, "We're not gonna do it because you're in violation," no. I'm proposing to say it's a stipulation of renewing it.
Right.
Is where I was going with that. I know, I know, I wouldn't, I wasn't proposing to do that, wasn't proposing to say we're not gonna do it because you're in violation, no, I'm proposing to say it's a stipulation of renewing it, is where I was going with that.
And our thing is, if you're making us comply with this, I think everybody in town that has a class two license should be in compliance with everything.
I don't disagree.
Right, you got some class two dealers out of their house.
I don't disagree.
Right, so if it's one or else, it goes wherever.
You know, unfortunately, we're hearing a lot of, you know, a lot of, right, and so when it comes to our attention, we do have to, we do have to try to be mindful when when that's happening.
I understand what you're saying, right. Right. Correct. Right, but you drive the same roads we drive, you know what I'm saying, like, I'm sure you see what we see.
I don't doubt that, not gonna lie.
That's in all fairness.
But if I drove around, I probably would, I I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
Right. But our fair point is, our license is valid, we haven't found anything, so there's no reason not to grant it, at some point, if there is a revocation hearing and you send me a letter and saying, hey, you did this, this, and this, fix it, and I'll be honest with you, we had a conversation two weeks ago, and you said you need to fix, and what did I tell you? If you tell me what to fix, I'll fix it immediately, but everybody says we're not in violation of anything, so what would you like me to fix? I can't fix something that there's no violation of, and I hear what you're saying, just because there's hair sex, doesn't make me guilty of a crime.
No, it just, you know, but when we're constantly listening to it, we have to at least acknowledge and just.
Right, and that's why I'm not turning this hearing into a circus. Right. Correct.
You know, and that's why I say it makes me feel uncomfortable, because, you know, not gonna make everybody happy.
Right. Well, I understand this.
Yeah.
And we feel uncomfortable, except when I feel a hearing, and like you said, you go by the place and like it passed three inspections, and you're like, why am I happy, I'm like, well, three people that are certified to do this, and it's okay, and you're saying it's not, so it's like to us, are you being biased toward us, and we're like, that's weird? That's how we take it when we're watching a meeting, because we're like, I mean, you're looking for a different answer.
Which three people, which three?
I'm assuming he means the people that came up to do.
That's what I'm saying, we had, we had inspections from other people plus the police that you sent out there.
Which would be who?
Oh, Mr. Saint Laurent, and there was a woman that they brought in and.
No, but he said he had three inspections, I didn't wanna ask him out of turn.
That I don't know. What three inspections?
We had inspections when we first moved into the place, and every year.
By who?
The state police.
They come out every year?
Yeah, and we passed all our inspections, including the one that you sent up, and you told you, it's very odd, most people give two or three weeks' notice, that cop called me, even though they went to the wrong building, and he was there within two hours. We didn't have to clean anything up, most people try to hide something, like a DCF visit or something, clean your house, do whatever, there was nothing to clean up, we weren't in violation of anything.
What, when our officers went, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There's no lead time, they just go in.
Right, but he said, most people try to put them off a week or two to get stuff in order, and I said, come right down.
What do you think?
I think this is like a shitstorm.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how to I don't know how to proceed legally, I don't know what's really, I wish the wish, wish the steep, the special permit stuff, the site plan review was clear, I knew Ed Vanez, this goes back years.
It's not.
So, okay, sir, I'm gonna let you speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have some information I received today from the legal counsel I'd like to share with the committee.
Have you shared it with Mr. Gillespie?
I will right now.
This isn't a court.
No, it's just, he wanted me to inform the board select.
Can I ask a quick question, is this from your attorney?
Yes, uh, he's been researching the property and basically, he's come to the conclusion, you can.
Can I come to the board, please, we have a court date on February ninth, we're not gonna make this a legal discussion today.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I agree, well.
This is way out of line for a renewal hearing, sorry.
Please, try to be polite, okay, that would smooth the whole thing, all right?
I'm trying to be polite. I'm sorry, I'm angry, but the whole thing started into a circus, right?
Okay, good.
I think we have to take this under advisement, uh, I'm gonna wait for your court hearing and see what happens with that.
Okay.
Um, you know, I I haven't seen this, I haven't read this, I will read this.
Okay.
And I I I know your situation too, uh, so, but I I don't know, I'm out of my depth here, and I don't wanna get into, I don't want the town to get into legal trouble. And I don't wanna set up a battle that's gonna go on and on and on, I want some kind of resolution here, so that's gonna take being nice, so.
And I totally understand that, and that's why I brought you the law and says, hey, the license has to be done, and if we're doing something wrong, welcome back for a revocation.
Thank you.
Right.
Did I finish that sentence? I don't know. Yes, sir.
Could I just finish my thought to that cover letter there to explain to the town?
I'd rather read the letter and get back to you.
Okay.
All right, it is true that this isn't a legal hearing, um, I don't think it's a revocation hearing, we might have one down the line, but I I think I have to keep clean about that.
Okay.
That's fair.
Okay, well, I'm glad it suits.
So then their license would be active.
I would assume their license is active, and we're hoping that they uh cut down the number of cars that are there, which is pissing off people, and again, we don't have anything clear written from the past.
Should we set, should we set a limit to that then, as a stipulation to the license?
Number of cars on the lot?
Mm-hmm.
I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I mean, is it feasible to get down to the ten?
It's feasible, but I don't want you to put the license in effect and come there in three days and ask me, I'm in violation, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, there would be, I don't, I have time very much, ninety days?
Yeah.
I mean, is that feasible?
Feasible.
Ninety days to end.
I would specify one thing, ten cars for affordable side, so how many cars for Gillespie Carkey's side, it's two different businesses, we're here for affordable, so you're only talking about affordable, correct? I don't wanna confuse things, but I want people saying, he said ten cars.
I'm talking about visible cars between the both.
Yeah, but ten cars is not feasible.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
I own, I own this whole business, no?
That's why we wanted to clarify, is it for the entire lot for both businesses, or just for affordable car, what we're here for?
Right. Well, that's what I'm asking.
I took seven hundred cars in nine months, and only fifty-three are up there.
And where did you put the rest of them?
They went to insurance companies everywhere else.
And you're working on cars now?
Yeah.
How many cars are you working on in that building?
There's five cars in that building.
My truck I've worked on in that building.
Sure did, a lot of cars did. And you can state, as you know, Ed, he had both buildings running side by side like I do right now, 'cause you know Ed.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I did all the stonework around this house.
You told me that, all the roads from Quab, you told me all about how you guys dropped them in one at a time before the foundation.
I remember that part of it, um, so, and you took issue with me calling your operation a junkyard?
Correct.
You don't think it's a junkyard?
No. Any vehicle that's clear title is not considered junk.
And they're all, they all have titles?
I have them all right here, come and see them.
I'll trust it.
But to answer your question, I will cut the cars down within ninety days, but ten is unrealistic for two businesses.
What is realistic?
Twenty-five cars in paint book. It's a towing company with four partners.
You don't have a license for that towing company, requires a special permit.
Hi, Mr. Jeff, please, you stop anything from the public, and we're having a conversation.
Okay, um, please, well, let's.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Let's visit after you go to court and see what happens there, and obviously, this is gonna continue. So, I don't know, I think my best skill is some kind of diplomat thing, so let's try to, if uh you wanna make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say something really quick?
Sure.
Okay, so the board has the jurisdiction over the used car license, and about the site.
Which is a horrible cars.
I feel like if they don't have a license for the auto body shop, then that would be a different jurisdiction, that if you wanted to put uh any kind of um limit on the cars, if you wanted to say ten cars, then that's, and if they do, if they don't have a site plan for the other business, then that's what they, they'll probably have to go through that process, but if you wanna restrict the cars for the, for the car sales, which is the license that you issue, entirely under your burden, you can give them a different number you want, and that was given to us by our legal counsel.
Okay.
Not to not issue it, but you can put any, any conditions on it that you feel are appropriate.
And then the other side would have to get legal.
They don't have any site plan or anything for that.
And that would have to start through the planning board, the site plan review, which is what we don't have.
But right now, our concern is affordable, in that license.
Right.
That's what's in progress.
Well, I can't make a motion.
So I would make a motion to allow the renewal with the stipulation of ten cars on that side.
With ninety days, please.
With ninety days to clean that up.
And what's sixty?
All right, ten cars, sixty days on that side, and then we'll look at it again.
Do you second?
I have to second it, I'll second it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Oh, we have to sign the conditions.
No, because we have the conditions on it, so if you don't mind, I'll have you guys sign another time.
Yep.
I'll have the conditions, I do have the license that you see, but.
Yeah, but.
We'll have to put the conditions on it.
Committee reports.
There's a few in there, we got less this time, I don't know, people are on vacation a lot.
Well, Scott's here.
Scott is here, that is very good, we did, yep.
The clerk is here.
I think about him sometimes.
Either of you wanna uh?
Sure, yeah.
Share with us how things have been going?
Yeah, there's not a whole lot to tell, I mean, a lot of meetings with the new construction and everything going on, and we're back to the time of year where we have a lot of alarms at the uh Willwright Pump Station, so that hasn't been any fun, but um, seems to be an annual thing.
The weather?
Must be the weather, yeah, temperature.
The cold, like the cold, cold?
Yeah. Seems to be when there's temperature swings that it gets the most, warm, cold, warm, cold.
That's all it's been.
Yeah, seems like the last two years, it's every January, just a member. So.
But otherwise, things proceed.
Things are churning up.
Okay.
Did we have, have, have they, anyone gone to the Lanier's house yet?
Yes, we, I met the plumbing inspector out there Friday night, and we did speak to Mrs. Lanier, and he gave her the same suggestions, basically, that we had all talked about. With no indication that the town would be footing the bill for any of this. She's probably gonna try putting an extension on the so-called steam pipe.
On the pipe, yeah, and see if that helps.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's gotta be the.
They may have two pipes on their house, the plumbing inspector advised starting with just the front one, because it seems that that's where most of the odor is coming from. She was concerned about the appearance, I can't blame her. It could look a little strange until you get used to it.
Yeah, but it's better than smelling, it's better than, yeah, yeah, well, fingers crossed.
For sure, yeah. Yeah.
And the building inspector didn't come?
No.
So he didn't show up, that's why I asked him and Ed and Scott to go there on Friday at three thirty?
Yeah.
He said Friday night, but maybe that's night to people who are excited for three thirty.
I hear ya, I am with you, Scott, I like to be in my comfy clothes by three thirty.
Literally like lunchtime.
Well, you can paint those pipes.
You can, yeah.
I've seen them painted camo, and they blend.
I will leave that up to the home board.
Yeah. I said, fingers crossed that, um, oh, now I'm reading where you went, sorry.
Well, thanks. You, sir?
Does it time of year, censuses, dog license, vote by mail, everything's going smooth.
All right.
I need to use, I already cleared it with Nicole, there'll be in-person voting at the end of February in year, following two days.
Like early voting, or?
The in-person, it's mandatory to have the in-person for the primaries, and so, for the three elections, the um, the town election, I'd never recommend doing in-person, but I, the vote by mail, it's just, it's too confusing to say, I'm gonna send an application, a ballot for this one, but not that one, so. But in-person votes, it'll be Saturday, the twenty-fourth, Monday, the twenty-sixth, and Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. And that will be that, and the furnace is running nicely?
Thank you.
Yes, except not right now, but we have it shut off because it's nighttime.
Has not been any issues, so, yeah, everything else is good, and the EV's working fine, it's plugged in.
Good.
Sticker.
Perfect.
And nomination papers are available, so if anybody wants to run, come see me.
Anyone, anyone?
Listens on the website, and posted out there.
I want to do that right now.
You what? Your dog, did you say, no?
No, I'm good with dogs, I work with dogs, I don't know if I wanna be a dog catcher right now.
Oh. No, that's not on the.
No, that's on the.
Slippen is though, huh, same.
Yeah, it's like.
Selectmen.
Slippen is, oh, that's what I thought, okay.
That's true, need a selectman, sit right here.
Thanks, Ryan.
Miscellaneous correspondence.
I do have one letter that came in today from Conservation, just in support of Division of Fisheries, Fish and Game, to purchase the thirteen point seven one acre Rosascus Land Parcel along Peter Sam Road, which borders an existing conservation land in the Muddy Brook Wildlife Management Area, so this was just a letter to us, a C.C. to us, you have it right there, just in support of of them buying their parcel.
This, this is this. And we have.
Oh, you didn't get it, it's just, oh, yeah, it's written.
We have a letter from Mr. Saint Laurent, I will read this. Town Administrator Report.
So sorry, I just got this done today, if you don't mind passing it by.
Any surprises, or are you gonna take us through?
Nope, not at all, no, the USDA update is typical, it's what we get every Friday, um, and they're kind of on hold right now, Project Two A is is gonna start any time, and Gilderfield, we're gonna be going out to bid this week, I think, this week or next. There was one other thing that also, the Patro Hollow Dam is going to have a Zoom public meeting, not, not the Patro Hollow Dam, they're, they're dam, they can't really hold a public hearing, but the fishery, a fishery.
It's on Patro Hollow, yeah.
It's about the dam removal.
On Patro Hollow.
And it's January thirtieth from six forty-five to seven twenty-five, repeat, and it's on our website, it's on our Facebook, for people that wanna attend that.
Can you give me that again?
Yeah.
January?
January thirtieth.
Yeah.
From six forty-five to seven twenty-five, and it's on Zoom, and I can send you the link, it's, like I said, it's on our website and and there on our Facebook page.
Thank you. This place is near and dear to my heart.
And so I attended the MMA conference, the annual conference this weekend, where there was a lot of good information and a lot of good news for the rural communities from the new governor and the new administration, they held eleven listening sessions over this past summer and fall, and we all went, I mean, most, every town went, wherever it was, I think it went to Royalston, and um and they listened to the rural concerns, so, you know, they're raising our unrestricted government aid, they're gonna fully fund the Student Opportunity Act, that's a boost of chapter seventy with four percent increase over last year, chapter ninety will be hopefully increased, you know, and there are other things certainly on there that are are very important to us, like procurement thresholds and things like that. Also, the five administr- town administrators met with the school administration on Thursday, this was something that we had requested since I started, just to have meetings throughout the year. This was something that we had requested since I started, just to have meetings throughout the year, to kind of get on the same page in what they think is coming up, what they think for enrollment. Enrollment's due by October of the previous year, so they should have a good idea of where we're at, so we could do our budgets. And so, since I started, we have been requesting that, we really haven't gotten it. But we were able to get a meeting with them on Thursday, however, not really understanding until I got there. The school committee meeting is tonight, so they're presenting it to the school committee tonight. So, we didn't really, you know, we tried to reach out throughout the school year, but we didn't really get any feedback, so. Enrollment is down, needs are up when it comes to special needs of, of the new climate of, of raising kids now. So, we'll see what happens with our assessment, I, I didn't really get a feel either way how it was going. I know enrollment's down by five students, but again, and just enrollment's down, but need is up, and that's really the bottom line that I got. And then everything else is basically just ongoing.
Signatures and approvals we've been doing, as we've moved along. Select Board roundtable. We've got some stuff.
Okay. You go right ahead.
All right. The, uh, Capital Planning Committee has been getting closer to sale of buildings. We're, uh, I won't steal anybody's thunder, but we're gonna do, uh, get an RFP together and start with the Rutherford Hill School. This is kind of related, I am eager to get an auction going and get rid of some of the material and equipment. So, probably, probably not till the spring, but, uh, you know, the old sander sweeper, that miserable Crown Vic in front of the firehouse, all that stuff.
You have a vehicle, right?
We do.
Yeah, there's some scattered vehicles around.
Yeah, and there's that box from recycling that glitch, so that too.
Yeah, that would be, you know?
A little revenue.
Right.
You know, uh, non-recurring, but we definitely wanna do it by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
And how, RFPs on the clerk of the works, do we have anything to look at?
No, we got nothing back.
Nothing we can get back.
That's probably gonna take care of that argument.
I mean, what do you do? If you don't get any.
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if, we could scale it down, I mean, I, you know, you, you lead, you send it to legal, and they're, they're going to make it so difficult. But, uh, you know, they're also protecting the town, so I don't, I don't know.
No, we'll have another discussion about it. Okay. And I'd like to have a personnel.
We need to have a personnel committee meeting.
We've been talking about that for months, and.
Wanna schedule it?
Yes. Because there've been, there have been complaints, I don't know how else to deal with them, so, um, I'd like to start.
I still have an email that Scott submitted originally when we were looking for questions. Old.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you, you had some things that you were questioning, that were like kind of contradictoring in, in the policy?
Yeah.
And then there was something about, I don't know, it was time or vacation days or some, um.
Might have been personal days?
Something, there was, it was some, yeah.
And the complaints that I've been hearing.
Sick days. You had a question about sick days?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, and the state's back sometime now.
Cause it was written two different ways on, on different pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about it.
We've got some cleaning up to do.
When it first came in.
Right.
And we have evaluations that we should think about. So, um, I talked to Jen Calenda, who's the only person I'm sure is on the personnel committee.
She is.
And we have to look at how the rest of it is constituted. She suggested that if it's, that if all the selectmen sit on it, it gets a little weighted.
For evaluation, do you mean?
Well, for, you know, personnel committee to look at personnel policy.
It's always got that one.
Yeah, and who else? And Jen?
Finance committee member, a member at large.
Okay, good.
Town administrator. Oh, yeah. So, there's, it's not just us.
Okay, no, I don't want it to be us.
No. It's us, Jen. And a finance committee member, Cheryl used to come to the meetings. So, we can reach out to them.
All right, let's pick a date.
And what are you thinking?
January would be a little sudden.
So.
End of February?
What are, end of February?
Wanna do it on a Monday night? Wanna do it during the day, just make people more convenient to the people.
During the day. I work.
You'll get over it.
I guess I don't have to be here, that's fine.
Well. So, six o'clock.
Well, what we can do earlier, if you wanna do before our meeting, we used to try to do that.
Okay.
When's our?
Twelve and twenty-six.
So, you wanna do like five o'clock on the twenty-sixth?
You'd rather do that than one on, than on one of the off Mondays?
Which doesn't matter to me.
Go to a meeting every Monday night?
Well. The fir, the one before that is President's Day, so that's out, cause that's a holiday.
Well, let's do five, cause that'll be better for Jen, for instance.
Cause she's here anyway, right?
She leaves at four-thirty.
Oh.
But she'll stay.
She will, she doesn't love driving in the dark, but.
Well, by then, it, all right.
Could you, well, four would be too much, right, if you guys are having to be here by six-thirty?
We could do four.
Or do you wanna?
You could make four?
I could make four, yeah.
All right, let's do four.
Okay.
On the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
And then?
Cause I, I, I can appreciate not wanting to drive it in the dark.
Me too.
I don't like driving home after this.
I'll follow. I'll follow you home.
You might not wanna do that.
You follow me home.
So, sometimes I'm wondering if it's the road or not.
And we got budget deadlines, uh, was suggested that we, as a select board, specify when to, um, put the call out that budgets are due by.
No, we typically do.
What, by end of February, is that ridiculous?
No, because I've had it, I think it was due January fifth.
Okay.
Um, the first time, whenever, right after the holidays.
Yeah.
So, end of February? Mid-February?
I would say, I mean, typically, we've, we've asked for them early in the past.
Yeah, I remember February, having to get in. Let's see what we can, what happens if we say, uh, budgets are due by.
February sixteenth?
Okay.
That's the.
Yep.
Third Friday of the month. Like, that's the absolute latest.
Yep.
You're getting, I mean, are you getting a couple?
Couple.
Yeah.
Not what I'm asking for, but.
Well, just maybe rattle the cages.
Well, I'm happy to send an email from the select board email, too.
I know, it's just unfortunate that it's happened, but. So, uh, budgets are due that day, okay, by five PM, I guess, I just put in my thing.
Well, you wanna say the fifteenth, because it's Thursday, and, or you wanna say Friday?
I think we're the only, well, Highway Two, but I think Friday's one.
Okay.
People aren't willing to do it on Friday, I'll be there accepting them.
What?
Well, you don't have to be here.
You don't have to be here.
No, I just mean through my email.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
It's fine.
All right.
All right, and, uh, and then the Old Town Hall. One thing that came up in the Capital Planning meeting, the last one. Because the attic was getting repaired, the roof rafters.
Trusses, yeah.
That's been a wonder and happy. There is some stuff with the eaves that still needs to be done. And in this conversation, I said that sitting there in front of that building at the fair, where I sit at that little table and tell people where the bathrooms are, I watched easily fifty people stumble on that stonework. The slabs are, were put in to match the old work. And they've settled. So, there's that much, it's not, it's not even an inch, but it's too much.
But it's enough that it's, yeah.
So, uh, I talked to Ann about it, and I talked to Randy about it, Randy put them in. And I can imagine they've been in place twenty years.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Okay. So, in that time, there might be some settling. I talked to Randy, he said they lifted them when they did the common job.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, he said he, he looked down in the hall and he saw clay. The original construction, it backed it up with clay to keep water from infiltrating into the stones. And during the construction, he was standing right there, and I don't wanna speak for him, but he said they took a couple of buckets of it out to look at what it was, and then they filled it with something else. And he said, you gotta get clay to do that, and they, the architect said, you know, thanks a lot, buddy, or whatever. And, uh, and, and that could be why they'd settled. In any case, the slabs aren't that big a deal, Randy and I have an idea of how to fix it. I think, I don't know if he'd be willing to volunteer, I know I can't charge. I can charge for my couple of helpers, we could probably get either Randy's tractor or not, we might have to buy Ken Lewis's. Ann's looking for a grant, might need to be, uh, matching. So, I'm just suggesting that we proceed with, this'll have to wait for the season. But we could lift those stabs, slabs, make it a smooth approach. And then we got the front step, which is too high for me, so I think it's a ten-inch step, nine-inch step, do you know?
I don't know, it's too high for me now.
So, it's high.
It's too high, so, to split the difference, we could actually order, order a stone cut to fit. And we could come, people could come up smooth onto the portico, step up on a five-inch rise, take another two steps, and another five-inch rise into the building. So, I'm gonna look into the costs of that, and I'm hoping that we got enough ARPA to, uh.
We have any ARPA?
Not really.
No?
Well, if you don't have any.
Less than ten thousand dollars, if that, and some stuff hasn't been spent yet.
Stuff we put in several thousand dollars would do.
Yeah, see what it's gonna cost. And the only, the only can of worms is ADA compliance, is there any other ADA compliant entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a ramp in the back.
Because they'll just make you do everything ADA once you.
There, that's already been done. There's an elevator in the building.
In the back, and then the entrance in the back.
And there's a ramp to go on the back.
Yeah, good, very good.
Jake Stupels and I painted the railing again last year, so everything's fine. In fact, the fire escape has been repaired.
Yeah, that.
So, there's that too.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
So, all those things, if we lift those slabs, we can check to see if we can put some clay in there, I mean, we can, that job, just stopping people from stumbling, it, it couldn't take more than two days. And, uh, and then we buy a stone to fit, and maybe we take a big sale, you know, public subscription or something like that. But, but I'd like the okay from the select board to proceed, at least with the planning.
Yeah, I think we see, see what it's gonna be, and, and make sure we have appropriate funds to vote it through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you're looking for a grant.
Yes, uh, mass preservation, Paul Holtz wants us to apply for, under the emergency thing. I'm not sure whether the ten thousand, or almost ten thousand dollars that we spent can be counted as the match for doing the eaves or, um, the, uh, walkway, but we're gonna apply for it anyway, and.
See what happens.
See if, uh, or if, if he would give, you know, half of the ten thousand back to us for having done the urgent emergency repair. We'll have to see how it works out, but we're working on, uh, the write-up, and Phil Morvess is going to, uh, look at the eaves and work on a plan.
Yeah, cause when Mr. Leed, the structural engineer, was up there, and kind of signed off on the repair, he determined that the eaves were open, and he said, if you don't fix that, you're gonna get something living in here, so, need to do that.
Perfect.
And I'm gonna meet with Noble later in the week, and we're gonna go measure things and imagine how the job would go. So, we'll have some numbers. All right, thanks. Any other, anything else, anybody?
Anybody wanna go downstairs and observe how we could make that work, the boiler?
Oh, the boiler, we, we got gigged for the boiler at the library and the boiler here.
Yeah, those'll, those'll, those'll have to be fixed.
So, that's McDonald?
I hope so, it, uh, Gino hasn't come back to me, but.
BEC did the one at the library, and supposedly paperwork exists, it just never got turned in.
That's easy enough to fix, yeah, I just have it all at RJ McDonald right now, I'm just, I'm just jealous of the people that are helping the townhouse.
We passed.
I don't have any help here with the boiler.
Boiler's so mechanical, mundane.
Me and Ryan are constantly having many hard attempts to make sure it's okay.
Well, with the townhouse, I was in every one of these cold days making sure the water would run and the thermometer was, the heat was on and everything, I never leave it.
Do you still have that alarm light?
Oh, we have that, but I didn't trust it. I can't see it from my house.
There was a time where it was, it was all steam, something blew that whole corridor, when you come in, the front door was, floor was buckled and.
Oh, that was before I took over.
Oh, that was a mess.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
I've got two sump pumps into that building.
Yeah, and we have good sump pump now. So, with a hole in.
Second. All in favor?
Seven forty.